We're called to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors work session Tuesday, December 19, 2017, 4:30 PM in conference room number one, County Administration Building, One Center Street, Chatham, Virginia. Go call Mr. Smith.
Mr. Barckett.
President.
Mr. Davis.
President.
Mr. Scaier.
Here.
Mr. Heigerman.
Here.
Mr. Barber.
Yeah.
Mr. Blackstone.
Mr. White.
Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to add the following item as seven C to the work session's agenda. And that's discussion consideration or interview for prospective candidates for enforcement assignment performance. Motion, performance, demotion, salary, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body and evaluation of performance of departments or schools or public institutions of higher education. For such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Legal authority, Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1. Subject county administrator. Purpose, performance evaluation.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Two minutes. Can I give a motion to approve the agenda as an amendment?
Subtle.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand. Two minutes. New business, 2017 audit presentation, Ms. Vanderheide.
Yes, I handed you all out a copy of our 2017 audit financial statements that were, that audit was performed by Robinson and Carmacopps. And Scott Wickham is here this afternoon to make a presentation to you all about that. So I wanted to let him come over and read it.
Thank you for being here, Scott.
Uh-huh. Can you ask for extra copy?
Thank you.
And then this is four.
Okay, I'll have it.
It's over here. Probably where you like.
That's fine.
You all have rearranged the room since I was here about. Looks good. Let's get passed out. All right. I'm the partner in charge of the audit for the past year for the county. And thank you all for having me. I'm going to go over the audit report, the thicker one you probably received a little bit a few minutes ago, not just the one you're just now getting. It's a very thick audit report considering your year. So we kind of hit the high points of this report and go over some detail of the numbers and then the handout you just received. On pages two through four is the independent opinion on the pension statement. And this talks about how we feel about the numbers in the pension statement. You all received unmodified opinions. It's the best opinion you can get. It means we feel very comfortable about the numbers that are in the pension statement. Again, this is in the audit report itself, the particular report. The only modification to the standard opinion you all have is implementation of GAAP 77 for tax-based disclosures. That's a new standard requirement you all require to implement, but it has no numerical effect. It does not affect the financial numbers as a disclosure-only item. As I mentioned, the audit report continues to grow each year. So if you're only going to read a portion of the audit reports, I would recommend reading the MDNA, as we refer to it, or the Management Discussion Analysis, which is on page five. Page five through page 14, and Ken does a great job with this. This is a very summarized, a little more layman's terms version of the audit report. So this is a good place to go if you only want to read a portion of it. Only have time to read a portion of it. On page 15 exhibit one, this is the statement of net position for the county. And this, if you were a business, this would be your balance sheet essentially. So this is the full accrual. This includes the, all the buildings and all the assets of the county, less all the debt. So the net position is at the bottom of page 15. Again, this is in a larger report. Sorry, I seem to be all trying to find it. On the bottom of page 15, you have the net position of the county. So the net position is similar to a net worth of a business. You have net investment capital assets, and quite a bit of your net position is tied up in capital assets and the buildings and all of that, less the related debt. So at the bottom, you'll see unrestricted, and that's what you have available to use essentially. There's a negative $7 million number there for the school board, kind of jumps out at you. That's significantly brought down by the BRS net pension liability or the unfunded, underfunded portion of the state teacher pool that the county was allocated by the state. I'll go ahead and more detail on that here coming up. On page 17 of the audit, exhibit three, this is your balance sheet. And this is a little shorter term version, your cash on hand, your short-term receivables and your short-term payables, along with your fund balance. And at the bottom there, you'll see unassigned fund balance of about $20.5 million. On page 19, exhibit five, this is your income statement and that same short-term modified accrual. This is a summarized version that probably should mirror your budget a little bit more. So this is the short-term accrual versus the long-term accrual exhibit two. I know one thing I usually don't point out, but I did want to point out for you all, on exhibit nine, the statement of cash flow for your internal service fund. A majority of this is related to your internal health service fund. The trend I've been seeing on that is a significant decrease. So the fact that you all are actually building a little bit or maintaining is great. Health insurance costs are going through the roof, and that's something to consider. But the fact that your fund balance is not dwindling there is unusual, but it's a good thing. So that's been a trend I've seen across the state so far. The county's in a good position there. All right, I'm going to jump back to, move to the back of the report, page 129. This is your gas opinion, referred to as a gas report. And this talks about our testing on the compliance and how we got to those good numbers. We're required to do certain testing in accordance with general auditing standards, the APA's, county cities and towns specifications. This testing was for both the county and the school board. You all have a clean opinion. There were no findings noted for either in that audit. So that's a good report. That's the best you can do. Also, no items of non-compliance. Again, that's a clean opinion. On page 131 and 132, this is the opinion on uniform guidance. It used to be referred to as A133. This is your federal opinion. We're required to do testing of certain federal programs based on how many dollars you all spend and a breakdown of where does this federal dollar spend on page 133 and 134. But again, you all had a clean opinion there on federal testing as well. So it's another, another good opinion in the audit report. So no findings this year. Very good audit report from that aspect. Going to kind of hit the numbers in the handout. Are there any questions on the audit report before I move over to the handout we just passed out? All right, then I will move over to the numbers on page two of this handout. It says statement of net position summary data at the top, exhibit one. This is some trend analysis information, and this is exhibit one. So this is the full accrual, the, all the buildings, everything included in this review here, all the debt. As you see there across the top, there was a significant decrease in the assets. A lot of that actually has to do with a little bit of decrease in cash, but the larger portion of that is the school board assets are held on the county's books while the debt is on the county's books. You all paid off some debt right at the end of 2016. So those assets transferred to the school board during this year. So it looks like it's a significant decrease there, but a lot of it has to do with some of the debt that led to those assets has actually now moved over to the school board. Well, the assets were moved over to the school board because the debt was paid off. So I want to point that out. It looks like a significant decrease there. Then just go down to the bottom. The unrestricted net position is something to watch. That's, that's the amount that's available essentially. So that is declining, and I'll get in more detail. It kind of corresponds to the fund balance decrease that you have happening as well. All right, I think this is probably the most important page here, really, the next two pages in the book, of the number review. On page three, the general fund summary. Sorry, it's in small font, but I think a 10-year review is pretty helpful to kind of get a basis of trends. So on the top right, you'll see a three and a half percent increase per year on real estate taxes. So that's pretty good, and that's actually about the number I've seen across the state here, across Southwest and South of Virginia so far. But for you all to have an increase of three and a half percent in your real estate property taxes, but only a total of 1.75 percent, kind of goes to show that the state and federal funding is declining as significant rate. So that's something to watch, is that a lot of localities are being forced to self-sustain a little more than they used to. So your real estate property taxes have been growing, but your total revenues have not been growing by the same amount. So they've been growing by less, and you've been relying more and more on those taxes. One thing to point out there, too, is also that the last several years, you've had that landfill fee that was not included in this calculation. So that's now no longer in there. There's no longer that landfill fee. So there was just a little bit in the general fund that was wrapped up collections, but now that fund has no longer been reported, the revenue base is not there. So that's still, I think, about $2 million at the peak is how much you all received for that in the last couple of years. And that revenue is something that's declining as well. The expenditures, the operating expenditures only increased about 1.1 percent, which is pretty impressive. Looking through those increases, you see a large increase in public works. That's what brought that landfill fund back into the general fund this year. If you look at last year's number, the 2016 number, it shows 1.467, 351. 2016 would have been 4,629,12 if you were looking at it on an apples-to-apples comparison based on including that landfill back in 2016. Another increase I noticed there is the health and welfare increased from 10.4, 10.5 to about 12.8. There was a significant increase in CSA this year. So all those CSA costs, the increased cases, did actually increase your state and federal revenue a little bit, but, but the costs are certainly going. Something to watch, it's growing quite quickly. Another number that jumped out at me is, looking at the trend, is the increase in debt service averaging 5 percent per year. Last year was a little bit of an outlier because of all the debt refunding that was done, but this year you all still did have a substantial principal payment as well. If you come on down to the bottom, you've got your ending cash balance, and that's really what matters, is how much cash you have, how much fund balance you have. So you'll see that it's been declining a little bit over the 10-year period. If you go to 2012, 2012 there, you'll see about $35 million cash in the general fund. Now we're down to 26.8. So over a 10-year span, it's a very small decrease each year, but over the last five years, it's about 5, 5 percent decrease per year. So you can see the, the change in fund balance has been a significant decrease each of the last five years. So that's something to watch as you go forward.
Sure, absolutely. In the, in that particular number, we paid down $5 million in debt. But that is in, was that '16 or?
What is that? Was '16?
So if you netted that out, we actually, if we hadn't paid that debt down, we would have a net increase.
You would. Correct. Correct. So you did pay down that debt, and then in this year, you paid for quite a bit of the animal shelter out of cash.
How much was, I know, I know the total cost of animal shelter, how much was in this current year?
I think it was 2.6 to 2.8 billion. It might have been right around three.
Yeah, I was thinking it was close to three.
So if you had three, if you backed three out of that five, five million, you'd be down to 2.4.
Yep.
Then CSA does force a change or increase in money a year, too.
There are some items, one-time items that did lead to those numbers, but it still is a decrease in fund balance now, so.
But they were one-time numbers?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, on page four, we look at your operating reserve. When we kind of look at the percentage of cash and fund balance on hand versus your annual expenditures, one thing I did want to point out that I don't have highlighted here, I look at the total school board expenditures increase throughout that period. The annual rate about 2 percent per year over the 10, 10-year, which is pretty good to maintain, not 3, 4 percent, but about 2 percent increase each year. And that goes along with the net, net operating expenditure for the whole county and school board of about 2.1 percent. If you come on down, you'll see the, the ending fund balance percentage of operating expenditures of about 18 percent. Again, that goes with fund balance that's been decreasing. We prefer that number to be closer to about 30 percent probably because you all do twice year collections. Essentially, you all have a lot of your funds on hand at the end because a lot of payments were done right there at the end of the year. So for a look at it, it has a once-year collections, 20 percent probably is more of a good number, but because of the timing of the payments, you probably should have a little more on hand with those twice collection. All right, on page five, we have the debt summary. The first thing I want to point out is there are some big numbers here, but make sure you realize that this is not all your bonded debt. Well, it is all your bonded, but it's not only the bonded debt. This includes the net pension liability, the BRS, which you all made all the payments you're required to make, but you have a liability because of the state telling you to pay 12 percent when it probably should have been 16 percent or a number, something like that. Along with the market volatility has created a liability there. So it's not a payment you have to make necessarily. You'll see that in accordance with increased rates going down the line. So when I'm comparing this to the state averages, the state averages also include those numbers. So I want to compare apples to apples to kind of give you an idea of where you stood. So you have total debt, including that net pension liability of 181 million, as opposed to last year, about 180 million, about, about 181. So about $600,000 increase there. You come on down, you have debt per capita of 2,860. The state average is 3,645. It should be lower than that state average. That state average includes Fairfax, which is a significant number. So I did want to pull out a couple of other numbers that are more local to kind of compare to. So on the bottom left, I have some more regional localities to kind of give you their debt per capita. And it's based on 2016, that's the most recent, compared to cost report from the state that have all that information. But as you see there, Campbell County's debt per capita was of 2,309. Franklin was of 2,231. Halifax was 2,769. And Henry was 1858. Again, Pennsylvania County was 2,860. So just a little bit above, a couple of those below Halifax, but that's something to consider as you're looking at your debt and, and where you're going, the sorts of plans to kind of have an idea of where you are.
I got a question.
Absolutely.
Does the fact that we have so many schools, small high schools, does that affect that number?
I would say, yeah, it probably does, because some of that debt is related to that. So, yeah, you're going to have more cost, absolutely. I don't know of a way to truly pull out of cost based on schools. I could look and see, that would probably be some detailed research, but we could do that. But just kind of get a summarized report from the state to look at, I hope it's some useful numbers to kind of compare. But you're right, the number of schools and having four pretty new renovated schools would definitely cause that to get higher. Okay, on page six.
I have a question.
Oh, absolutely.
Under, under long-term obligations under the first row, I'm not sure exactly what we're talking about, 6,560?
Sure. That, a significant portion of that is the landfill closure liability, which is an estimate provided by your landfill engineer. That's the estimated cost that you're required to approve. When you close that landfill, you'll have to do it on certain standards to meet the Q requirements. So a large portion of it's that. You also have the net OPEB obligation, which is the difference in the subsidy, as they call it, for your health insurance for retirees. So the fact that you all allow retirees to stay on your health insurance, they essentially want to accrue a liability or the standards require you to accrue a liability, saying that if you did not allow them to stay in your plan, you could actually get a lower health insurance rate. So that difference creates a cost, which is accrued as a liability. Those are the main two that are in that little long-term.
In the first line, general obligation debt is basically your general obligation bond?
Correct.
Correct. The third item, what are we talking about there?
Those are your premiums on those bonds. So that's, that's a liability that essentially affects the interest that's paid throughout.
Capital leases?
The major one there is your E911 leases, capital leases you all have. I believe the school, the school board does have a bus lease as well, and that, but most of it is your E911 towers.
That's a tower money we have borrowed.
The lease revenue there, most of that is the school board's, the energy bond that everybody's kept on, if I don't get it wrong.
And that slowly decreases over time.
Correct. Yeah, that was issued last, so that's why it was a big jump.
Would already be real obligation for the county.
Correct. Correct. That's, that's included in our budget here, if I can.
Indeed. BRS line item in here, which is on a net pension liability, that's something that they required, GASB required a few years ago to be started including in this.
Correct. Yes, that, I believe that was 2015.
Yeah.
That was required to be started afforded. Before that, you all had chosen to pay a alternative rate, so there was a little bit of liability for you all. But across the country, GASB requires any unfunded pension plans to be recorded as a liability. So that was 2015, so that's why you see a jump in, in your net pension liability.
And that's a portion that the state is still unfunded, but we're still payable to state tells us to pay.
Exactly.
Paying our obligations.
Exactly. You're paying what they ask you to, and you're paying in a timely manner. But the actuaries have set a certain rate, maybe not the rate that it should have been. Well, the actuary set a rate, and the state chose a different rate to help everyone's budget essentially, including theirs, but everyone's was the plan. And then also, the market didn't do as well as it wanted to. I have a page to show the, how volatile that is with the market investments. But that, that's what's led to that number, is choosing, choosing to pay a rate less than the actuaries that you should pay, and the market not doing as well as it wanted for numerous years in the past. I have heard that this 2017 was pretty good for BRS, so hopefully the numbers will start to go to the way a little bit. But prior to that, it had been increasing the pension liability. And so you all, the county has a, essentially, a bank account with BRS. So your funds are there. The school board, non-teacher plan, has a bank account essentially. The teachers across the state are in statewide teacher plan, all of them. And the state allocates a portion of that to you all. So that's why it's kind of in three parts, is you all have a liability for all of those. But BRS has kind of given us that number. So yes, nothing yet to pay. You don't have to pay an $8 million check to pay it off this year. You might see increased rates to pay it down. They're probably hoping the investments earned will decrease.
There is some market doing.
Exactly. There really is.
The reason I'm asking these questions, I want to make sure that everybody understands, and I don't want to see, I don't report to citizens that we, in this particular line item, we owe 104 and a half million dollars to them. It's a substantially lower number. A lot of these things are just typical line items that you're required to report.
Absolutely.
GASB requires.
And that's, that's why I wanted to leave this with, this includes all of your debts that were required to pension report, but it's not your bonded debt that you have to pay. So it's not, you don't have to pay a 40th of this each year. You have a certain investment that was included in the notes of the pension statement. But these are accounting liabilities.
Right, obviously.
Absolutely.
But when you look at that number, the two things that really, as far as this board's, this board's concerned about all of them, but the debt we're making payments on, or the general obligation bonds are issued, which is that 68.8 million.
Correct.
And then the 10.2, which is mostly that E911 debt.
Correct.
Or the line.
Those are the bandit tools you all need to focus on pretty much, correct.
All right.
Sure. Okay, on page six of the assessment summary. And this kind of chart and trend of your assessments over the last 10 years, and they've been pretty flat. A little bit of increase in the real estate, but pretty flat across, across the board there, so. I think it's about a 2 percent increase per year in the total assessment. On page seven, these are some helpful parts. This is based on the same numbers as that income statement summary, which had, that had all of the numbers by the bank showing. They kind of show the current year and the prior year of where the money came from for the general fund, and then where it went essentially. Both, all of these charts are actually pretty comparable to other localities, but I do think it's helpful to kind of have a visual of how that, the ends and the outs of the general On page eight, again, this is the similar state information in a chart form of those trends. As you see, the, the real estate taxes are growing there, property taxes are growing there, and your state and federal revenue intergovernmental is really not there, not growing that much. There was a little spike there in 2010 for the, the recovery act funds that were out there, but pretty flat, otherwise not growing. Most of the revenues are pretty flat there within the taxes. Look at the expenditures, there's, there's some movement there. The one that I noted is the CSA. It was getting pretty high, and then it dropped down once we took April 8, April 8 out of the program, and now it's kind of ramped back up again. So I just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of that and watching that. The caseload has increased, so that makes sense, but just something to watch as you go forward. It's easy to forget that CSA has a proper match portion when, when you're doing what you say. On page nine, we talked a little bit about the net pension liability of BRS. This is a one-page summary. Kind of, kind of breaks out, the numbers are so significant, and there's so much estimate in that calculation, that I wanted to break it out so you can kind of see what's happening here. To give you a brief summary of how the calculation was done, standards allow you to report a year-old data essentially for this. So the amounts that are reported are actually as of June 30 of 2016. But you all paid on the, the payments during 2017, so those are accounted for as deferred outflows or an asset essentially, if you will. That's generally how it works. They try to amortize the, the investment return to smooth it out a little bit, but so far, we haven't seen a lot of smoothing from that. They calculate the liability as if they're going to earn 7 percent each year on their investments. So the amounts that are reported in your pension statements are the 7 percent discount rate numbers there. The 8.2 for the county and the 73.7 for the teachers, 1.6. But I wanted you to see if they made 1 percent better than they thought they were wanting to, how much that decreases your liabilities, or if they make 1 percent less, how much it increases it. It's, it's hard to predict what they're going to make, so they use 7 percent, but I want you to go see that if they have a really good year, it may not be anywhere near what we thought it was going to be, but that's kind of how it is estimated out. So a very significant estimate that's required to be in the financials, so I want to. On page 10 and 11, several years ago, the APA audit of public accounts required us to do some additional testing, partially related to this liability to try and make sure their calculation was accurate, or the data they were using in the calculation was accurate. Also, to make sure that people were getting the correct retirement. So we, with the VNAV implementation, we did a lot of detailed testing. Both the county and the school board had clean reports on their testing, so the sample sizes on the next page, but we went in and looked at. So, the sample size is on the next page, but we went and looked at salaries to make sure that all of that was correct, and higher dates and all that were correct. And, everything came back, make sure the payment's on time, all was good for the county and the school board. So, that's another good report that we sent to the state that they were required to do.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Going back to page nine, the discounted rate is what they projected their returns to be?
Sure.
Have they seen any upticks or better performance since they've done ICMA managing those funds?
Yeah, I think it has helped a little bit. I've heard rumblings of possible another plan. I don't know, I don't know what they'll, hopefully, they won't. But, I think that the ways that they can make this deficit up are increased rates, decreased benefits. So, I think the ICMA is helping a little bit. I don't know if it's helping as much as they wanted to.
Well, they went away, they went to a defined contribution portion of the plan away from defined benefit, which should alleviate some of this going down the road, as far as I, as far as our potential liability threat.
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We're not showing them a lot of the money yet.
That's right, that's right. Because they're all young.
Okay, on page 12 through 14. We did have a few items that we noted during our testing, some smaller items that we wanted to point out to try and get the record going forward. We discussed these with management, and I feel they were taken care of. I've heard of several different people that have made changes already, so I feel comfortable they all will be addressed. I don't plan to go into detail. If you have any questions, please let me know. I think this is the first year that it is public document and will be on the state website, so I want to make sure that you had a copy first, to have any questions before it goes there, so. On page 15 through page 17. This is our letter to governance. This is where we send you all a letter and let you all know the results of the audit. The main item we report here is if we had any issues with management throughout the process of the audit. And, I know that I send probably thousands of emails to probably Kim and Tracy and everybody else, so I appreciate them responding really quickly and having great information for us. So, it's great to work with them, they're great to work with. Everything went really well throughout the process of the audit, so. Wanted to say that. We also talk about the new standards that are implemented. Again, as an act of basement disclosure of the new notes and financial statements. And, in the several significant estimates that you all have. And, that includes depreciation of buildings, that landfill closure calculated by your engineer, allowance on property taxes, the net OPEB, which is that health insurance subsidy, and then the net pension liability we talked about several times. So, all in all, a good audit. There are a few other things I wanted to point out, and it actually goes back to the audit report itself. And, you don't have to go to the pages, see, I can talk about it, but it's in the thick audit report on page 85. We talked a lot about Gatsby 68 and that net pension liability, and how that impacted your pension statements. It added 15 pages, just the audit report itself, regardless of a significant liability to your books. The next standard to be put in is Gatsby 75, which is the OPEB version of that. So, it will also increase the liability on your books for OPEB obligation, or OPEB liability. It will also increase length of report and the detailed disclosure, to kind of give you an idea. The school board is currently reporting an asset in their OPEB currently. But, their liability is 2,024,000. So, it'll be a swing of about 2.2 million dollars to the negative, to the school board, for the county. You're currently reporting a liability of 1.1. Sorry, I had that backwards. So, currently reporting a liability, the county's reporting a liability of 1.1, but it will be 2.2. So, that's about an $800,000 swing to the worst of the county, once this is put in. And, again, the school board was reporting an asset of 231,000.
That don't sound right. You said 1.1 and a swing to 2.2, and then you said an $800,000 difference.
Sorry, sorry, the two. Not two, sorry. Yeah, that might have been wrong, the two. 2, 2,024, sorry, I saw the two. So, for the school board's actuarial liability, which will be the number in the pension statements for their OPEB, is 6.5 million. So, I think one of the big reasons for this OPEB is to kind of clean this up a little bit. Because, the focus before was on making sure that there was an expense in the pension statements. But, the focus really wasn't on how that liability was calculated. So, that's why the school board has an accrued liability of 6.5 million dollars, but is reporting an asset, essentially. That's an actuarial question for how they do that. They have 10 options, I believe, that you're thrown currently on how to come up with the calculation. They're being forced to use the same one, so they're basically compared apples to apples. So, these numbers could change a little bit when they do a different actuarial, but for now, it's the best estimate I have, is their actuarial liability. But, it does, we do anticipate it to increase the liability for all of them, including retirees and their health insurance. Other standards listed here, there's a little bit of a change in reporting for deficits of debt for when you all do advanced refundings. I don't expect to have a whole significant report, probably a little bit of change in disclosures required. Gatsby 87 coming down the road, I think that's FY '20. Had leases as a new standard. What for report operating leases a little bit differently. So, those are the main standards. Definitely, the OPEB will be the most significant impact in the near future, so. That was a lot of information, and I know you all probably have not had a whole lot of time to go through all the audit report and all of that. So, my contact information is there on the front of the handout. If you all have questions at any point, please let me know, I'll be happy to answer them. Kind of summarized, I hope the audit went really well. We're here a little bit earlier. The APA wants us to present to you all in December, so we made every effort to do that. I thank the staff for helping turn around things, I know I've talked to the family on Christmas Day, or Thanksgiving Day, so we worked really hard to get this done, and I appreciate everybody's help to give a good audit with no findings, so we're really happy to do this, so. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is December financial presentation with Mary.
Yes, of course, this is our monthly report that I'm giving you all to get you prepared for budget season. So, the presentation so far, we started in September with the 10-year financial history. In October, we did a county peer group comparison. November, we did cost drivers for the next four years. And, tonight, we're going to be talking about fund balance, which, so did our auditor. So, he's kind of gotten us prepared for that. And then, in January, we'll be discussing our revenue options. And, again, these are found on our website. If anybody's asking, tonight's will be on there tomorrow. So, our goal for tonight's presentation, we want to review the county's unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2017. We're going to review the county's estimated FY '20 18-year-end fund balance. And, we're going to review our financial management policy regarding fund balance, and discuss possible fund balance policy changes. So, this is a slide that we've seen before. What is unassigned fund balance? And, unassigned fund balance is a residual classification for the government's general fund, and includes all spendable amounts not contained in other classifications. And, our current financial policy governs the amount that is needed to be in that unassigned fund balance. And, so, our unassigned fund balance, as it states in our policy, should not be less than 20% of the average actual general fund expenditures for the preceding three fiscal years to address natural and man-made disasters and to offset budget fluctuations. So, based on the last three years, if you include the current unassigned, the general fund expenditures for 2017, our amount should be at 14.2 million dollars, which is a little bit of an increase from 2016, 13.4 million. So, that means we have to keep 14.2 million dollars in our unassigned fund balance. And, just so you know, we really only checked that at June 30. So, that's where we really get that figure, because it changes on a daily basis. This is the slide that was also included in the budget that shows our fund balance history and our trends. Again, the big jump there in '07 and '08 was because we went to twice-a-year taxation, and you see how that blue line continued to tick up, and now you see it falling. We had estimated, our 2000, hold on just a second. We had estimated at the end of 2017 that we would have roughly 23 million dollars in our fund balance. So, I wanted to see how did we do in comparison. So, we estimated unassigned of 23.5 million dollars. We did assign our school amount, because that had been continuing to grow, and so that really inflated our unassigned fund balance. And, that's not real dollars that you're going to be able to spend. And, that money primarily has been being saved by our school board to buy textbooks, which is my understanding, and this world is here to verify that, we're going to buy textbooks this year. And, so, that money will go away. So, we wanted to show a true figure at the end of 2017. So, our new estimate would have been 20.9 if we had considered that school assignment, and our actual unassigned was 20.5. So, it was about $365,000 if you actually do the math of what we thought we were going to have and what we actually ended up with. So, does this fund balance mean that we have extra money? The answer is no. June 30 of each year is when our fund balance is at our healthiest amount. June 30, 2017, our fund balance was 20.5 billion dollars. And, June 30 figures also have our first tax payments received for obligations for FY '20 18, and even our auditor stated it tonight. So, the monies that come in in June, you've already said, this is the amount of money that's going to fund my next year. So, I wanted to look and see, well, how much did we get in June? We received 17.2 million dollars in June of that 20 million dollars that you had in your account there. So, our estimated FY '20 18 unassigned fund balance at this point, if we use our past history, the unassigned general fund balance will fall to roughly 18.5 million on June 30th, 2018, bearing in mind that 17.2 of it will be for 19 obligations. So, then I looked at our financial management policy. Is there something there that we need to change? And, I handed you out an article that I had Holly print, so that she could read that. It's an older article, it's from 2011, but the GFPA did some research on what fund balance should be. And, so, in that article, it states that the GFPA, which is the General Finance Officers Association, recommends that governments establish a fund balance of no less than two months of general fund expenses, which is roughly 16.67%. And, basically, what they're saying is kind of like your own personal household. You should keep at least two months' worth of expenses in your savings. If something catastrophic happens, you have at least two months of money to cover your bills. Pitts and Vandy County's policy states that we'll keep 20% of the average of the last three years of our general fund expenses in our fund balance. The county's unassigned fund balance at June 30 was actually 28% of our general fund expenditures. So, it was clearly above our 20% threshold. Two months of the county's expenses would be 12.5 million dollars if you based them just on FY '17 expenditures. But, putting three years in there, that's what's inflated it, because we have done some, you know, extraordinary expenditures that we may not continue in the future. So, that may come down some. So, based on my research, our policy is very similar, and it adequately covers the GFPA recommended balance. But, with that being said, Scott touched on something very important. You know, that percentage that he said needed to really be 30%? It needs to be 30% because if you look at it from the perspective that what came in in June is actually for your next year's obligations. That's why if you back that off, we really would be in a bad situation. So, we, and that's why we say that we may need to revisit how we designate our unassigned funds. So, maybe we need to let you all know, this money came in June, and it's not really free money for us to spend. So, what's next for us? We really need to make a commitment not to use fund balance unless it's specifically for our emergency or non-recurring expenditures or one-time-only charges. We need to create steps to eliminate the need to use fund balance to balance the budget, and we need to develop a multi-year financial plan to restore the fund balance to an appropriate level. And, what I would consider, if you take our 14 million dollar figure, or we add 17 million dollars to it, we would need roughly 31 million dollars in our account. And, some people would say, well, gosh, that's a lot of money, but it's really not that much money if you put everything in perspective. So, revenue options will be discussed at our next meeting in January. And, in fact, we're going to discuss solid waste household fee here pretty shortly. So, do you have any questions? I think y'all have been hit with a lot of financial data tonight.
One of the things you mentioned is when it's plain administration, is to talk about ways to increase revenue, the revenue options. Are we going to be presented with some options to cut?
Definitely, yes. We have already been in the.
At what point?
Well, we're deep into it. We've been working on expenses for next year's budget for the coming five years since summer. So, we are working on lots of alternatives. It will probably be February when we start rolling out the recommendations of years when we can cut.
Let me ask you a question, Mademoiselle. The two months, is that coming from the federal government that says we need to have working capital for two months at least?
That's the Finance Officers Association.
That's kind of my optic to me. I think that we need to, what would be a probability of increasing that from two months to, say, four months for Pitts and Vandy County, just asking for that, or maybe one month? Because, actually, I'd like to see it a year. I think a year is far more well-planned. That if catastrophe hit, that this county could survive off of a year. Of course, I know we have to have, what, at least a billion dollars there to carry us, but I'm just asking for a month or two months more than a two-month requirement.
Well, that would be up to you all if you wanted to change that policy. I did check with other localities, and the percentage is about where everybody else is. It used to be that ours said 10%, but that's when we carried 50%. We had 50% in our general fund. So, we made it a little more realistic. We never were going to get down to 10. 10%, we would be at a dangerous level, so it really did need to be changed. And, so, I think 20% is a good come out. If you wanted to go higher, it would certainly safeguard you even further. But, if you're committed to keeping the 20%, and you have funds that you're assigning instead of at the year-end, and we started doing that signing with the assignment of schools, and if you all are aware, that money that comes in in June is actually for your next fiscal year, and make sure you put enough to cover those things, I think the 20% is okay. So, that means that you would be far in excess of that. You would be in the 30% range.
Yeah, it's a question of where do we count? Right now, we count prepayments as part of the current fund balance, which artificially inflates what it feels like we have. If we were to, like, you know, basic accounting principles, pull out prepayments in our metrics, and say that counts for next year, but I don't count that as shares, and count current, well, then we probably want a different number on our fund balance. So, that's why we're saying maybe we should revisit this policy, because, to make sure that we're all on the same page as what we're counting on. Because I don't know that that, we've always been there before. If we pull out the prepayments, you know, 20% is what we should shoot for, 16.67, or 20%. We leave those prepayments in the number, we probably should be shooting for a higher rate. And, a lot of times, that number is relative to the size of the. And a lot of times, that number is relative to the size of the organization. A small town like Chatham may have 200% of that ones, but it's because their actual budgets. But when you get up to where we are, yeah, I've always thought about 20 to 25%.
Any other questions? To follow up on what Mr. Smith was saying, is I think if we were practicing the counting that you're describing now, when we were talking about $34 million in the general fund and we were looking at paying $5 million down on bond debt and we were looking at paying $4 million down on animal shelter, we may have opted to take a different route, especially with interest rates as long as they were, had we been pulling out those prepayments out of that money, we may not have hit that fund. We were looking at it as a whole thing and it makes good sense not to pay interest on money, but we've got $34 million that we have. So, I like the approach personally that you're taking now and it would give us an opportunity, I think, to be better stewards and better decision makers going forward.
Thinking back on what you said, even the cuts in revenue, that number was deceiving, you know, what you actually had at the time. I'm sure we, right here, they need that actual number, what we just were presenting in the whole of the, kind of thinking.
Right, right. And that's going back three years, I guess.
And Kim always reminds me of this. There's never going to be a problem unless we change our billing schedule.
Right.
If we were to change our billing schedule, then it's going to be the worst time to shut down. As long as we don't change anything, we're never really going to really...
Because your cash flow will come in the month of June, which compare apples to apples. As long as you don't really in your mind think we have that money.
Oh, we don't go back to one tax rate.
As long as we don't get back to one.
Yeah, because as long as you've got two in a year, you're always going to need that.
The year that you started, two times a year, is the year that it became inflated. And from that point forward is what you have to track to get your numbers, to compare apples to apples. The other thing here, and I'm glad that we pointed this out, is the money that's carried on in books for the school board, basically for books that accumulates over several years and then they buy books. So, that shows up in their balance as unassigned, when truly it is assigned.
Right.
And it grows, if you look at the bottom line number for unassigned money each year and you look at that as your basis, well, that's really not true because that school of textbook going continues to grow each year until it's spent a day.
And that's why this year, we really felt it necessary since we were kind of getting to that dangerous level that we really need to pull out schools because it really makes it seem not as quite as bad as we thought. We really thought it would be worse, so we decided to pull that out and say from henceforth, I mean, we always have school money. I mean, it may go to almost nil this coming year, but there's always money that is going to have to roll over because they always have grants that continue through the new year. And so, I think, I think it's a good practice to go ahead because we'll know that figure. We will know that figure at the end of June, what they'll ask for back. And it's things that really you all can't deny them because there are things that just didn't end at June 30 and they don't need that money back.
Well, I think it's important too, as we're going through the audit, that we show about a 3.5% increase in our revenue from real estate, but if you look down at additional expenses that are mandated to us, that the state and the federal have backed off from, that really cuts that in half. So, you know, that money is spent, we had nothing to say about the extra revenue being spent.
CSA is one of it. Part of it. You go back and look at the constitutional office positions that the state cut and the county picked them up and funded them on.
Right.
That's a tremendous amount of money.
Well, I think that's, you know, back to the same thing we talked about before, it's important that we send that message to, through our representatives, you know, please don't cut us anymore. We can't keep going to the way...
Put somewhere, I said, on the balance, their budget, they give it to us. They give it to us. They give us the balance of the state budget. They don't need those as long as we...
Well, not only that, but through CSA, that's one avenue, not only did they not, they increased that line items, but we have to match them and pushes us away. When they come in, in the middle of the year and ask for $660,000 that we have a budget, we've already budgeted them an increase in their line item, a substantial increase. I mean, that's a lot of money. That's over one, that's a penny and a half on real estate to CSA in the middle of the year that we weren't even aware of.
Any other questions, Ms. Van Rij? Thank you very much. It's been, been eye-opening in the last three or four months. Next item on the agenda is solid waste revenue auctions. Mr. Schmiller.
Okay, so, we've been talking for several months about the status of our solid waste collection operation and disposal. And one of the things we've been talking about off and on in Formulie and Formulie is how do we fund the solid waste operation long-term? Basically, we have two options. We can continue to do what we did this year, which is use general fund property tax revenue to pay for trash, or we can exercise our option, which there is only a select few in Virginia that has the option, to levy a fee for both collection and disposal. The differences are pretty obvious. Property tax goes to everyone whether their property is developed, i.e. whether it has a house on it. And a fee would be applied just to those with, well, we call it rooftop fees. So, if you have a roof, a home with a roof on it, a residential property on your land, that number of residential properties would be the one's assessed fee. We're bringing this to you at this time because, and as per previous communications, we are in a very tight window to make these decisions, to be able to put them in our billing cycle for the June 15 collections. One of the major recommendations and Treasury bits and shorter has some communication in your package about this. One of the major considerations of levying the is how we collect. In the past, we've had separate billings. Back when we had the fee, we had a different billing for your property taxes, we did your solid waste fee, which is very confusing and burdensome to the citizen. So, one of the recommendations from the Treasury would be to combine those two billings into a single cycle, into a single piece of paper for the citizen. In order to do that, we have to make software changes and that's the tail of this wagon stall right now. In order to get the software changes written and implement that by April for our next billing, they must have by the middle of January, a yay or nay that we're going to do this because their lead time is several months to write this code for us. So, there's an outline proposal in your package for this. We passed out your old solid waste fee ordinance, this was, I mean, there's parts of it I think that are probably, technically, we're not using this right now because the fee was withdrawn. In order for us to reinstate this, in order for us to create the rules by which we will levy this fee, we have to have a public hearing and take action at your January 16 meeting. At a minimum, it would require adopting a new ordinance. At a maximum, it would require adopting a new ordinance and setting the fee. We might be able to buy a few months on setting the level of the fee until we get deeper into a proposed budget, but we must, this is what they write the software around, who does it apply to, how to code it, how to get it on the bill. And this part has to be done by, at your January 16 meeting in order to have this revenue option available for you in the next budget. So, what we're looking for tonight is your preference on do we continue paying for solid waste from general fund, general property taxes, or would you like to have the option to consider the fee? And if you'd like to consider this fee, we would need your authorization to post for public hearing and action from January 16. Richard's here, he's got plenty of operational questions that he can answer and Kim and I can certainly help you and beg you if any other questions you have. And Cheryl, Ms. Hammock is here because she will be the one administering the laws. Yes, sir.
Could that bill be implemented in the second half December for a half year and then go on to the next year? Or does it have to be in the first part of the bill?
No, it could be at any time. That's not right because you've got a bill in the first period.
The bills are created at the end of the year. Like if it's called in 2012, when you implement it, we have to force another bill out mid-year.
You lose a whole year.
Any other questions? I got one. We could decide that we want to say hypothetically, go with the implementing of software and decide after we get through the budget cycle or get into the budget cycle about expenditures and revenue and all that, if we actually go implement any amount.
Correct. We do still have to spend the money to fix the software.
I understand that. So, we would, we would be voting to spend some money, but we're not obligating, we're not technically obligating ourselves to definitely apply the fee. Of course, we would not want to spend the money unless we thought we were going to have to do it.
But I thought you still had to have a poll here.
So, to do the software fix, this part has to be done. And this is everything except the amount, the amount we can put in April, well...
Whenever we do a...
That's what I wanted to be sure we were clear on, whether it's zero or whether it's what X.
Yeah, the only thing that can't change later are the parameters by which we assess it. The amount of fee can be adjusted later.
That's assessed.
Oh.
Well, now, you're talking about like April setting the fee, but now we've got to have the requirements of who gets assessed it.
Like January 16. That's what I'm...
If actually the first, the second section here says that as far as the actual fee, you guys set that annually after a public hearing, but you're right. The parameters need to be in place if you're going this direction by January or 16th. But then you would ostensibly, probably in the budgetary process, you would set that actual number of what that solid waste fee is.
But if the number was zero, it wouldn't matter.
Right, correct. Would we be...
Yes, sir.
I've got several questions. The first question I would have would be, previously the rate was set at $5 a month or $60 a year per household, per rooftop. Is it a limited code section as to how that can go or how to lower?
I've got the state code right here in front of me and it says that you can't levy a fee that exceeds your actual cost incurred by the county of removing and disposing solid waste fee. And also goes down further that you can use the money for equipment and any closure of the landfill, as you just saw in our audit. Our closure costs are astronomical, so...
Well, and that's where I'm going with it is we, we were generating about $1.6 or $1.7 million a year. But in actual, and we had citizens to ask this question, they wanted to know where that money was going when we were charging that fee, not realizing that really operating the landfill cost a lot more than $1.7 million a year. And so, and that number was really communicated to the public and put in that and everything. In reading, I've got some real, I understand the situation the county's in, but I've got some, I've got some real problems with this software provider. When you read this letter that Mr. Shorter sent us, sent us to Hupp, and you look at these, when I've dealt with software providers before, and that's part of the reason I'm perilous, because they have a tendency to make promises they can't keep. And anybody that's dealt with them, you've had, obviously, you've been in government a long time, you saw it too. When you look at this list of things that this software provider, cornerstone, Keystone, I'm sorry, I deal with one called cornerstone. When you look at what this provider has promised and not done, we've got things that's hanging out there for three years. I'm not, the total cost, I was looking at, and I'm a little confused because we've got several statements of work and so forth, but between the county and what Mr. Shorter would have to pay, is it closer to $60,000 that they want upfront?
Let me ask Richard, did you read that into that? Did you agree with me? Okay. I wanted somebody else to read it and make sure I saw it the same way. And we did. So, Mr. Shorter has a project currently about to commence with Keystone and that is to place personal property bills on the same billing as real property, correct? That's a 75, now what is it?
To combine the right thing, if you get a business, personal property tax statement, you get a personal vehicle and any other boats, normal homes, is to combine all of that.
Combine, okay. Combine all personal property building onto a single bill. That's a project that he has requested Keystone to do with him and I think it's, I don't know, $75,000, $7,500. That is a time constraint on Keystone, just as a matter of fact. For us to add another project of adding our solid waste fee to the existing project of dealing with personal property, they're saying those two things combined mean that we have to incrementally increase our local level of staff support to actively manage both projects simultaneously. So, there are three proposals in the packet, 22,000-ish for solid waste fee, $7,500-ish for personal property consolidation, and then a project management fee of $30,000. The way I read that is the $30,000 project management fee does not exist unless we do the time of the year. We could ask Mr. Shorter to delay consolidation of personal property and avoid the extra surcharge, or if we don't do the solid waste fee, we'll avoid the surcharge. But if we ask the company to do both at the same time, there's a personnel surcharge of $30,000 for project management. That's the way I understand it.
Which would put it close to $29,000, $29,000, if we don't, it's 29 plus 22 plus $7,500, which is close to $60,000.
In my opinion, which I've not discussed with Mr. Shorter and it would be the priority of this board, we would politely ask him to let the $7,500 project lie for nine months to avoid the extra fee of $30,000. Lee.
So, wait a minute, wait a minute. Back up, back, back, let's get clear if you all know he just answered that question because he didn't answer it the way you interpreted it. If we do the solid waste implementation only, what's our cost?
$22,000.
Not, not 22 plus 29, just 22. And that, that...
That's if Mr. Shorter wants to go along with that.
Correct.
Well, I'm sorry.
I would, I yield a little time.
Thank you. I get that, it's $5,600. And, gosh, I'm, 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 I just had to speak, that's a, that's, anyway, that, that's from the, from that page of what Mr. Shorter, I said it. If I'm reading that wrong, I'll apologize, but anyway, I know, I know we didn't do the money, but I think we certainly need some more of that time, so... money, but I think we certainly need some more of that time, so. In our citizens, I, for my thoughts.
Mr. Ball.
What do we know of reassessments?
She said we should probably get some numbers within the next week or so.
I mean, personally...
Because I don't know anything.
Personally, I mean, I can't move that quickly. We don't, that's a lot of hypotheticals. We don't know. We don't know what the reassessment is, we don't know what the needs are, we haven't had the budget, we don't know what we're cutting. I mean, I can't, I just can't support that with, I know we have the timeframe, there's no way, that's why I asked, could you do it mid-year? There's no way. I'm voting to even start it till we know where we're at.
Okay.
If I'm logged out of this, several issues. Number one, I'm just not comfortable giving this company more money to perform when they haven't performed in the past. And the second thing is this, we all know we need, we've got to make some heavy cuts and find some revenue. And I'm open, I think we have to be open to all options and listen. But part of the reason you have a public hearing is to get the input of the citizens before you make a decision. By doing this, we're saying to the citizens, we're spending 30, 22,000 or whatever it ends up being, anywhere from $50,000, $60,000, anyone, we're committing before we listen to the citizens. And I'm just not comfortable doing that. And this particular company, this is not just one issue that they had with according to this or other, and I mean, I have a lot of faith in Mr. Shorter, he's a lifelong citizen of the county, his family's been there forever, I don't think he tries to steer a fraud. He's done a good job of that. If you read this, these people have, they don't have a very good record. And, you know, they don't want to lose us as a customer, I'm sure. And a lot of times what happens is they use one county or one contract they have to build on and use as references or do corrections or updates to the software. Now, I suspect that's what's been going on here. But I'm just not com, I'm not, I can't, I'm not, I can't support this at this point because the reason with software, their track record. And number two, committing to something before we have a public hearing, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Two ways I might suggest we satisfy your concerns. One, I say we, and I will send a letter to the company, asking them point blank respond to these concerns of our treasurer. Do know, we do have a problem, and Ms. Hammack as well as Mr. Shorter know this, is that we are on an old system. And instead of carte blanche, cut and cut the cord and go to a new one, we've been patching an old system to work like the new system. So our two constitutional officers have been formally committed that, yeah, come late summer, did we say late summer? Come late summer, we're going to jump back onto the new system so we can avoid some of these problems that are created by our customization. That will alleviate some of our pains, but I think your point and Mr. Shorter's point is valid, and we should ask them point blank, what's going on here? And I can take that up. The second thing is, we're not committing to anything tonight. The only thing we are asking you to do is hold a public hearing if you think this is something you may want to do later, this budget process. The commitment would not be until after a public hearing, and then technically, even if you amend the ordinance after a public hearing and implement this schedule, it's technically not something you actually do until a budget's adopted and a fee is set. So there's still some time, even though you're, I think your point is, we're indicating something to the citizens, but it would be after a duly advertised public hearing, next month. So those are my two responses.
Can we get, can we look at the option of not utilizing the software? I realize it would cost you some of a third party to do the billing.
We have certainly kicked that around. I think our cost would be higher and our ability to collect would be lower. It would be like hiring a third party collection agency to do it. There's also a perception thing that other people have told me, maybe someone will consider, is having bills come from Atlanta or Charlotte or Richmond without even our local, well, they probably are local, but basically a third party billing and collecting on behalf of the county. Some people have mentioned to me that might be a PR problem also, but we can still do it, and our net cost might be a little higher.
Mr. Blackstock, you have some... Yeah, I just have a few issues with this. I've always had an issue with this garbage tax because I think it unfairly singles out landlords who have a lot of rental property instead of going to the users, the people who are actually using the garbage dumps. So I don't know if there's any way to fix that, but the second, more importantly issue I have is, from what Mr. Shorter said, there's a collection issue. If someone decides not to pay, are we going to be able to develop any teeth into going after those payments? And I don't know if a third party system would have a better angle at going after those fees than the county would, since there's only five-year statute of limitations on these bills. And I kind of got a feeling that people realize there's, there's no way the county's going to spend a lot of money to go after $60 a month if they make just the same amount of payment.
I think you're right. I think a third party would have less effective collection. And I agree that it is very difficult to give it to the user. In fact, I think it is probably near impossible unless we had our own utility system that everyone used, which we don't. Quite frankly, the staff sitting at this table thinks you should just raise taxes five cents and cover all of our landfill fee stuff and designate it every year, take the equivalent of five cents, put it in the enterprise fund, which would be very difficult, Miss Vanderheide. But politically and as your staff, our job is to give you both options. So we're telling you, if you want to pursue the fee option, we're going to have to do something in January. If you don't, we're going to have to stay on the tax track.
At least on the collection side, it would be against the real estate side of things. You can put a lien on the county property and actually go after the fee.
That is correct.
I just think we're going to have a lot of problems trying to reinstitute this, put that in teeth to go out and to the funds.
I have just a curiosity question. We were collecting the fee three years ago? Three years ago now? What happened to the fact that we can't collect it now with our software? I mean, we were using software at least.
I don't know the answer.
Charlie, just saying, they won't address that.
Okay, thanks.
Of course, I've only been here 15 months, but what I understand, there've been so many updates to the software since the solid waste fee was done away with, that there's absolutely no way that they can just intertwine the solid waste fee again without rewriting some programs.
It gets back to, we're on old software, we didn't migrate to new software, and we end up with a laundry list like Mr. Blackstock's showing us, patches to make old look like and work like new, and we're just going to have to cut the cord and move to new.
Well, I certainly agree with everything pretty much everybody said. Everybody's made a legitimate evaluation. You know, I do have some concerns because I think we're facing a really tough budget. And, you know, I would like to be able to go into that budget with all options available, but, you know, hearing all the concerns, I would have to agree with the assessment of where we're at right now. Yes, sir.
When it comes to real estate as well as rental property, I know a little bit about rental property, the landowner and the rental person, he's going to do one of two things. Even if you don't have a trash fee in place, then you implement a tax raise, you're going to pass it on to somebody, and he goes back to the customer who's renting from him. So you either, they either get an increase in rent to accommodate that trash fee, or the landowner, he's going to pay extra rent, I mean, he's going to pay extra increase in real estate. So he's going to pay for it, one way, she, whoever. So that, you got a choice, you either pass it on to the customer or you pay it. And the second thing is this, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't know all the figures, but I do have a feeling that all the counties, most of the counties that I've had opportunity to rub shoulders with as far as other supervisors, they have laughed at the trash fee that we were picking up $5 a month. And if we relate against the backdrop of most counties in Virginia, and sadly, I don't have that, I didn't request that information because I'm with Farhead and, they said, you guys are getting away with murder, because what, they're paying another locale in the range of $100 and more, and they've got the equipment to accommodate just to cover their trash when it gets to the landfill. We don't even have that. We got property, we got stuff sitting out there with rags tied on it, weeds growing up, and we've had this problem for several years or a few years. You know, somebody wrote in the newspaper and I didn't read it all, somebody's been asleep at the wheel, you know? So this didn't come up on us by accident. So this has been coming, and here we are, in the can, but it's in our lap now.
And there's not very many counties that have a trash fee, is there?
I think...
That's what I thought, I thought everybody got rid of it ahead.
But there's not a...
There's like five or six counties that have the ability to use it, and our research indicates that zero use anymore because there's been so much administration.
Well, I say correctly, because if you go down there to the county, down there to the coastline...
Oh, Virginia. I mean, Virginia.
Well, there you chime in, but I think I'm on it, because Virginia's a delinquent state. The only way you can implement this is by direct general assembly action. And the general assembly listed specific localities to include Pennsylvania County with the ability to do this. Several of the localities, as I understand it, have implemented the solid waste fee or trash tax, or whatever you want to call it, have rescinded it, including this county. And there's some problems with it. On face value, it looks and sounds great because you, number one, local home parks, they require a lot of services. Sheriff's office calls, papers being served, each household has a tremendous amount of trash. And I'm not just saying local home parks, I'm talking about a parking complex, all kinds of stuff. These multi, multi-family, they require a lot of services, which cost the taxpayers money. This is a way to levy on them and not go in places just on real estate for our people that just own land or land in a house. So on face value, it looks good. The problem is, the code section don't give you any bite to collect it. On real estate, we can levy on that property, if they don't pay the taxes on it, we can go after it.
For 20 years.
But on, but on trash fee, there's no bite. Now, people in this county were very good, we generated about $1.7 million dollars on this. But, you know, there's a lot of reasons after all the localities said, I'm not doing it. And, you know, the, one of the things that come up in the treasurer's race, and I'm not getting into, I don't want to open that pile up for, I'm just saying, people were complaining because we've got multi, you would get, you would get one mailing with personal property and real estate, and then you got another one with the, there was multiple mailings coming into your household. And people didn't like it, and they were complaining about it. I don't know what they think was being controlled by the treasurer or the commissioner of revenue, it was because of these software restrictions. And so, I don't know that, you know, in talking with people, and that's why you have public hearings, I mean, we represent people, and if we commit, it appears, and I agree with you, Mr. Smoot, and I understand what you're trying to do as an administrator, but we also have to realize that we, the people on this board, work for the citizens. And if we commit to this with money, it looks like we've already made a decision without listening to the public. And of course, many of us, I think, well, everybody on this current board maybe went through the process, knows we must, we must have went off right before. But we went through the process of getting rid of it with a public hearing, and a lot of the same people are going to show up if you try to re-implement it. But I just, I'm not comfortable at this point voting to do this until we listen, until we hear the public and we look and hear, for that general assessment, how much more money is that going to be? Now, currently, we're put assessed, for every penny, we generate about $400,000. So a nickel would bring in two million. And then, if you decide next year you want, we need to do this, that would give us time to work with a software company, and hopefully they can get their act together. But I want to see them correct these other problems.
Mr. Ball. Kind of a trivia question, Mr. Hanks can probably answer this. Do we require multifamily farmers or troopers to have trash services provided?
You know, a lot of, that's mandatory. I didn't even realize till you mentioned that, most of them have to actually get a private company to handle their trash. That might be something that we need to look at.
It's a conversation we have.
I think that's mandated in a lot of, I didn't realize we didn't...
We can handle multifamily as commercial accounts.
How do the people from using the comp back decide?
That's a problem. Okay, you couldn't know it.
I mean, I got private numbers, but I'm like the first P mark four, but I'm just saying, I didn't realize, I thought that was considered off business.
So we didn't even run trucks that would do that anyway.
And under the code, if a multifamily dwelling has a box that they contract out to a private hauler who does not dispose of it in our landfill, we cannot charge a fee on those people.
I was talking about the thing, I was saying, I didn't realize we didn't have to report it.
Well, I had gotten a call because there's been enough conversation out about land bills and everything else, citizens in the town of Chatham, because I just did my district. And, you know, of course, they didn't like the fee because they're already paying a fee in the town of Chatham. And, you know, I haven't had anybody on Chatham County Council say they have any problems collecting that. So, and I agree with Mr. Blackstock, that, you know, our folks are good folks, it's obvious that collection was not a major problem here before. So, but I, you know, everybody's made really good points. I do think we, I need to take a breath and figure out how we're going to do. As everyone here has discussed and talked about many times, and certainly at the presentation that Vanderheide's made the last four months, we know we're facing a tough budget year. So we'll work through it, and we'll get through it, and we'll be better when we finish.
So just to tidy this up, if you tell us you don't want a public hearing, just to hear what people think, if you don't want a public hearing in January, there will be no option for a fee this year.
This year.
And that's fine, just being very plain.
Chairman, I just want to weigh in on that last point, is this, my thought and objective is that I want to get this landfill issue addressed, okay? So that way we can accommodate the trash of the citizens in Pennsylvania County, real simple, whether it's a, whether it's a fee or whatever else, or a tax raise, whatever. We've got to handle what's eating us up now. So that's my, my point, whatever the way we go about it, that's not, that's not that great material to me. The point is, is we've got to come up, we've got to get a solution to get good equipment, halfway decent equipment to accommodate, cover the trash alone that's being there now. That's an alligator, in my opinion, that we need to, we need to either eliminate or make it start feeding us with skin and meat and everything else, and just not getting that.
And just so you remember, we are in the midst of an engagement with a consultant, a solid waste consultant, to help us make some decisions about future land. And there's a legitimate, one thing that Mr. Dax just said, I'm sorry, is legitimate, which is, we can shut the landfill down, and there's a lot of value in that landfill 20 years from now that we're using. And there's a legitimate argument that we ship our trash out of the county for the next 10 years, save our capacity until market rates change, and then open back up and make some money. So we're looking at every single option.
Yes, sir, I'm not concerned. I appreciate that. The other thing is this, Mr. Blackstock, I agree with him as well as him as well, Mr. Ball, is this, if we've got, I don't care about being a customer to a group, to be a very good customer, that's fine, that's normal protocol, but if they're not paying off in the long run with these glitches that Mr. Blackstock's not comfortable with, and he's not comfortable with them, I'm not comfortable with, I think we need to approach somebody else. Now, are there other facilities? I'm sure there are. They got to be computerized, I know there are. So I'm thinking, look, if you can't do the job, and in fact, and properly... So I'm thinking, look, if you can't do the job, and in fact, you properly owe us some reimbursement of where you neglected to cover your contractual design, and maybe pass a reimbursement and move on to someone else.
Well, Mr. Smithman said something along with everything I heard from you all that made me really good. Because he made the statement that Mr. Shorter and Ms. Hammack was looking into changing the system regardless down the road. Is that correct? Did I hear you correctly?
If I can elaborate on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When we first went on this computer system, okay, and I was involved in a very minimal amount at that point in time, but we knew nothing about systems or anything. So the people in the high branches kept saying, when they would come in and say, this is the way the software works, they'd say, no, it's got to go this way. We do it this way. It's got to be done this way. They did all this customization based on what we wanted at that time. Through the years as the software evolved, unless they went back and reinstated our customization in every piece, we lost a lot of functionality through the years. So we're at the point, just like with this billing thing, the treasurer's office changed the types of bills for six years in a row. The first year was seven parcels on a tax bill, all the personal property on a tax bill. Then people would sell real estate. They wanted a separate bill for every piece of real estate. So it's been transitioning over all these years that we've had them. So what Mr. Shorter and I myself have talked about, because every time we complain about them not meeting the deadlines or whatever, it's been because of customization that we have.
That we requested.
That we requested. So we're willing to look at the package that they have that is off the shelf or whatever you want to call it.
The canned package.
Yes. And basically, if we can retrofit ourselves into that, then going forward, some of these things will be alleviated.
So when, when I'm hearing some of the concerns about Keystone, really, some of the problems are somewhat self-imposed because we wanted, we wanted to make theirs fit into our box, not us fit into their box.
Exactly. And in defense of who was making those decisions, that's, no one had ever dealt with confused. I mean, you know, we had a system, we finally got one that was custom-written and basically served as a type rail. I mean, you know, we do a lot of automation.
It was time for an iPhone, and we want to keep our headphones.
Exactly. Yeah.
I would like to keep them automated.
Any other questions about this?
No party.
No, no actions, so we'll move on. Okay. Item six, a discussion of benefiting items. Anything else?
I do not, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, at this end, can I make a brief statement, a staff comment that might affect the meeting tonight, and I'll determine whether you want to take action or not? I received an email just this afternoon that the Community Foundation of Dan River Region had approved the grant that Pittsavani County had submitted for commercial wash and dry at the animal shelter. They've approved $11,745. I insert that now because they have attached a grant agreement that would need to be signed by the chairman and county administrators before January 10th, which would be before your next meeting.
We will take it on.
And also, Mr. Chairman, we've got a, I believe, grant of $25,000 from that same organization to do and bring it to the Ringo Trail, and it has the same timeline.
Can we just add it?
Add it to the agenda tonight?
Yeah, so far.
Just write it up, get it to one other someone, put it on the agenda. Maybe agenda. That's what we need to do.
To accept. That's a good OPM situation.
So neither of those grants have a local match?
No.
No.
We'll be happy to take it, $36,745. All right. Anything else? Nathan, you want to take the brief summary of the closing session?
Sure. Need a motion there in closed session for three items. Items A and B are for consultation concerning prospective business or industry of the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding facilities in the community. Legal authority for the first one is Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A5. Subject matters, project solution, purpose is economic development, project status update. Second item is legal authority for Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A5, subject matter, project Apple, purpose is economic development, project status update. And item three, which would be seven C, is the one that was added tonight, and that's for discretion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments, schools, or public institutions, or higher insurance education, or such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Legal authority for Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A1, subject county administrator, purpose, performance evaluation.
Roll call, Mr. Smith.
I don't have a motion on it.
We didn't. We got a motion.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead and advise me.
Mr. Ball makes a motion, Mr. Blackstock says. Roll call, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Markston?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Re-pleaded session.
That's not going to look like a textbook bill.
All right. Eight, return to open session at 6:45. We're now going to the closed session certification. Be resolved at the work session of the Pittsavani County Board of Supervisors on Monday, 19, December 19, 2017. The board hereby certifies by our recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered. Sorry, one of the over here. If any member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the code he showed, he shall also state prior to the vote indicating substance of departure, the statement shall be reported in minutes. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?